Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, thumbs up. Good to see everyone. We have a partially full house today. It's good to see. Good to have company in town. Good to have you. Thank you for coming to our first month meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners. Just for information purposes, we do meet twice this first Tuesday.
Can't hear me?
Turn your mic on.
Up one more time. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Walter. We meet the first Tuesday and Thursday. Thursday, first Tuesday, six o'clock. Thursday, Thursday, five o'clock. Of course, our meetings are live streams, so you have the opportunity to watch those meetings. Let me say this, what I'm thinking about it. In reference to a letter to the editor, our budgeting session is an open session. We, Mr. Mosley, you can help me. The office, the administration office sends out budget preparation sheets to the various departments, and they have a certain amount of time to get those filled out and resubmit those. And they come in, and they're initially screened by Mr. Mosley and Mrs. Richardson, our CFO. And this time, did a little different procedure. We asked that they would meet with some of the entities where there are very little variations in their budget requests from last year in total. And they did that, and all those that see that, they brought those to us and re-screened those. Once again, all this is open to the public and advertised. Am I right, Maria? Thank you. And then, we sat down with another session because some folk had to have another little talk with us about their budget requests. So we did that, once it opened to the public. And then, we brought all the commission in, and we quasi finalized the budget, knowing that, you know, we have to have certain things to come in in order to do that finalization process. And then, once the budget is done, it's posted, it's sent out, it's on our website also, in the office here. So anyone in the public has the opportunity to come in and view the budget at any time. But the budgeting process is open, and someone, they question the word rigorous. I won't say we don't beat people up, but we do question them with the question necessary for them to justify their request. And there's some department heads here now who, if I asked them, they'd raise their hand and say that some things that they asked for, they did not get because the budget did not support those things. So either we tell them no, or we defer it to January, or we defer it to next year. The very first thing is the cuts. And some of them do come back again and say, please, please, please. You know, we had some of those. Before we finalize, finalize, there are a few things we'll look at again based on some requests from some of the various departments, organizations that we serve. We'll look at that. But that's generally the process in a nutshell. How long, man, when we meet, we take how much time it takes generally. I think we try to do it in the mornings.
Probably a couple months at least.
Yeah, we do that. So take my word, just not, so when you, so when we bring it to you, we've done all the vetting. By the time you hear it, the vetting has been done. But once again, the process is open to the public. It's not a closed-door kind of event that we do. It's open to the public that incorporates all of our department heads working with us, working with our administration to make the final budget. So it's not an easy process. In fact, we take a breath, we exhale when it's done. We exhale when it's done. So, and I'll be happy to ask any other questions offline anyone may have. But that's kind of how the budgeting process works for Liberty County. This thought I'd help someone with that. Once again, we all, staff is available anytime. Samantha, our CFO, is available anytime. And if you want to meet with me, we'll offer ourselves to you to sit down at a table and go through it with you. But that's kind of how it works in a nutshell. So thank you for the opportunity to do a little, make a teaching moment. Mr. Mosley, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
I hope it has after I made that long speech. Yeah, all right. Now, Bishop Page, you will come and lead us in our prayer. And our pledge of allegiance, please stand if you will for our invocation. And I pray that we...
Let us pray. Most holy and righteous God, we come to you this evening to thank you for grace and mercy. Thank you for your loving kindness towards us, God. God, we thank you for this city of Liberty County, God. We thank you for the Board of Commissioners, God. We thank you for their families. We ask you even now, God, to give them the wisdom that they need to navigate through the decisions they have to make, God, on a daily basis, and even in this meeting. We thank you for all that you do through and in us. In Jesus' name, we do pray and give you praise. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You heard it, didn't you? Thank you so much, sir. Bishop, will you please come back to the podium? This gentleman that stands before you comes before us every first Tuesday that is scheduled allowed, which is most of them, and leaves us in our invocation. And he's careful to pray for us, for our success, for us to have wisdom and knowledge, and that we would ask God for our best wisdom, give us the best opportunity that our decision would be to the benefit of the people, of God's people, let me say it that way, the people that we serve. And, you know, that's not a job that we pay you for, but we thought it'd be nice to give you a little something, something for your efforts. Can y'all give him a hand for his? You come and just make it a Kodak moment for you. You can have this picture for future generations. And it says, Bishop Kendall Page, in grateful recognition of your unwavering support and spiritual leadership, faithfully opening the Liberty County Board of Commissioners meeting with prayer, your presence, reliability, and inspiring words uplift us with heartfelt appreciation, beyond dedication and service, Liberty County Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Ready?
Thank you so much, Senator. Appreciate you. Thank you, Bishop, again, for your service and your community. Proclamation, I saw representation. There they go. Keep it beautiful. Commissioners, what we're going to do is do the proclamations now at the first Tuesday meeting. So we do them all, no matter what date they are. So we'll do them once a month rather than doing them.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Karen Bell, the proud executive director of the award-winning Keep Liberty Beautiful. And I am up here with the outstanding advisory board members, and I'll let them just say their names and introduce themselves for the record.
Timothy Scott.
Good afternoon, Hakeem Clear.
Willa Lewis.
Patricia Nash.
Mia Wilson.
And the mascot.
She's our youngest volunteer. That's one thing with Keep Liberty Beautiful. We are a family organization. Anything we do is family-ready. We have had youths, if you remember, like Leopool Herscham, from three years old all the way up. So that's one thing we pride about. But we're up here talking about Native Plant Day and the Your State Park. So native plants is very important to our community because they are the plants that's going to sustain what Georgia, Liberty County, throws at it. So you want to try to plant as many native plants that you can in your garden or in our parks. If we can be of any assistance, especially we're talking about landscaping our parks, please let us know. That's what we're here for, and if we can assist in any way, we would love to do so. And then, we have the Your State Park. Your State Park is a national event that happened on the last Saturday in September, and is to highlight all of our historic parks throughout the land. So we incorporate our Fort Moore's with Rivers Alive, and that's why one of our, Mr. Tim, our board member, is holding up the Rivers Alive t-shirt. We hope every customer, commissioner, come out and get their t-shirt by participating in one of Rivers Alive cleanups. It goes from now all the way till December. So no excuses. But we have them in all sizes. It's very important that we have our community back up our historic parks because if we don't keep them up, don't go visit them, don't make sure they're in good shape, then they would disappear. And that's one of our treasures, especially here in Liberty County with our state parks. So if you've never been to Fort Moore's, which is September the 27th, and from nine to 12, this is your time to go for free because it is a cause, because you got to keep it up. So you get to go for free and help us clean up and spruce it up.
Mr. Mosley?
Proclamation, Native Plant Awareness, reading it in short form. Whereas native plants are an important part of Georgia's national, natural heritage and history, and whereas more than 3,600 native plant species make for diverse state flora, making it seventh in the nation for vascular plant diversity. These plants grow in a variety of habitats, including forests, swamps, grassland, beaches, floodplains, mountains, coastal sand hills, and swamp. And whereas native plants and their derivatives provide food, medicine, and other essentials, Georgia's benefited from the economic impact of native plants. And whereas the Georgia Office of the National Autobahn Society, as well as other organizations and businesses, including nurseries and retail green gardens, work to expand the market for our native plants. And now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman and Board of Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Georgia, do hereby proclaim September the 6th, 2025, as Native Plant Awareness Day, so declared on the second day of September 2025. I encourage all of our citizens to celebrate native plants.
And sir, can I say one thing? We will be giving out native plants this Thursday at the farmer's market from three to seven. You don't have to sign up for them. They're first come, first served. We have over 100. So please come out and get your free plant from Keep Liberty Beautiful this Thursday at the farmer's market from three to seven.
Commissioner Stevens, is Fort Moore's in your district? Okay.
Well, I know you're going to have a green t-shirt.
You did that on air.
Proclamation, Your State Parks Day, Fort Moore's Day Historic Site Cleanup. Whereas state parks preserve natural beauty, wildlife habitats, and clean air and water, they can also provide open space for future generations. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks because of decline in park attendance over the last decades. And whereas state parks can boost a state's economy through tourism, recreation, and relocation. And whereas state parks can provide a quality life for all Americans by providing access to nature and outdoors, spending time in state's parks can promote exercise, good health, and community involvement, and encourage families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman and the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 27th, 2025, as Your State's Parks Day, Fort Moore's Day Historic Site Cleanup in Liberty County, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance and visit Your State Park, so declared the second day of September 2025.
Sir, I'm sorry. I do have to correct myself. We do have one commissioner who already earned his Rivers Alive 2025 t-shirt for participating in the first Rivers Alive event, which was the beach sweep, and that's Commissioner Moore.
Good job.
Oh, yeah.
He's showing out. Between that and the park being in district one, you have some representation. Come on. Fort Moore does deserve our attention, God. Phil Oden would say that it doesn't get the support it deserves. So you need to ensure that we protect the one state park that we have in Liberty County. And this group you see is a busy group. I went to that luncheon last week. They are a busy group in our county. Number two?
Number two?
Y'all didn't move, did you? Y'all didn't move, did you?
Yep, almost.
That's an idea. Thank you again. Once again, a very busy group. I went to that luncheon. I heard so much more than what we see for proclamations. They are a busy volunteer group doing marvelous work in Liberty County. We're proud of it. They even connecting with the group out of Fort Stewart to extend what they do. So we're going to bring that before you at some point in time so you get to see a fuller picture of what Keep Liberty Beautiful does. That's why they win these awards. They're busy doing great things behind the scenes. Thank you again, guys and girls. All right, minutes for the August meeting will require our approval.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes.
Inside joke. Any discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All right. Both meeting minutes for August 5th and 21st are approved. Thank you so much. Mr. Reggie Pierce, hello, sir. Come say hello to us and give us an update.
Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight?
Well, sir. How are you?
Good, good, good. I just come ask for extra million.
Wrong meeting.
No, good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity, once again, to come and give my yearly 2024 update, 2025. So I want to take this time to let the commissioners know that last year, we had closer, roughly around 200 cases last year. I think we ended up like 189 last year calls we had last year. We had, we had about 16 suicides last year. And this year, we only have five suicides so far. So most of our calls last year were natural deaths. We had 133 natural deaths. And then, the homicides last year was at six. This year is at two so far this year. We've had three Fort Stewart cases so far this year and last year. And we've had, in children deaths, we've had one male and four females. Last year, we've had three males and six female deaths of infants, children last year. So, and then, just want to kind of bring the commissions up to speed on where we at in the office this year. My, finally got hired another full-time deputy coroner from deputy coroner that went over to fire service. With that being said, because of training, she can't go to school until December. So she missed the July deadline. She can't go to December. So I do have another deputy coroner, Ms. Tammy, is here. She's working from eight to six. She clocks in at eight to six. She clocks out at 6:00 PM. Then she gets a call. She clocks back in, works a call, and then she clocks back out. So she's been doing this since June. And so, and what she gets is comp time. So she gets the comp time. Sometimes it's three hours, sometimes it's four hours, sometimes it's five hours. It just depends. So just for transparency purposes, if you see that, that's what that is. That's where she's working. So she's right now the only actual certified. I do have a part-time, which Mr. Thomas Carter.
I was going to ask about him.
Yep. His mother is ill. His mother's ill. So he's actually taking care of her.
I see.
So he's actually only able to work weekends. So he's worked like every other weekend. So that puts us with just that one person. And Tammy, just so graciously, as sweet as she is, she graciously, when I was going through the process of trying to determine, I was trying to make a quick hire before so we can get them to school in July, but I didn't want to make a quick hire, and then you got to turn around and fire and then hire again.
Yes, sir.
So I took my time. She said, just take your time, and we'll work it out. So since then, she's been working it out. She tired and brought burnout, but she's still working it out. So I want to let her know we appreciate that. But that's where we at right now. I haven't taken any questions from anybody at this time. Any commissions have taken questions?
So she has what, to December to go to?
Yes, she can't go until the first week in December.
Okay. What is that? So in the meantime, you guys are doing OJT as much as you can in the office with?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We maintain too much. She's able to go. She's able to do, she's able to do reports.
Well, she's not shadowing. You said you have an...
Yes, she's shadowing. She's able to do reports. She can't call cases in. She can't sign death certificates. She can't do any of those things. She just get a number. She can't call cases in. She can't sign death certificates. She can't do any of those things. She just get a number. So she's unable to go out by herself. So Tammy is kind of training her too. So she shadows out with Tammy and go out with Tammy. So we was out there the other day on a call midway up there. We always out there. So she's kind of like shadowing right now, but she's on the payroll, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Pierce, would you explain for the public the morgue situation?
So as of right now, the morgue situation, I think right now, we've been had under control so far. We've been able to maintain between my morgue, my cooler space and hospital cooler space. We've been able to have to worry about outsourcing cases. We've been, sometime we do have a full morgue due to GBI. Sometime they can't take cases until a certain time. So we have to hold for storage. Then you got families that don't want to make arrangements for the loved one. So we have to hold another extra timeframe until they do that. So sometime the morgue gets full at the hospital. So then I bring them to my facility at the funeral home and then we use the morgue funeral. And no additional costs to the county. We're not charging additional costs to the county or anything there right there. So no additional costs. If we do outsource it, we got it worked out to where we can use another facility and they're not making any charges to us.
So it's not as bad as last year didn't sound like.
No, sir. No, sir. Thank God COVID is spiking up, but we have had no COVID deaths so far. And there are no COVID deaths last year.
The last question?
Yes, sir.
I guess you're still waiting on your new facility to come up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can you say where that's at? Where is it? Is it years out or you don't know?
You know, I don't want to make false promises, but it's on that bucket. There's some other competition in the room.
That's the oldest registration.
I see that one.
But you're in line. You're in line.
Listen, I just appreciate. I appreciate everything.
For a building?
I appreciate everything. I think everybody has a job to do and everybody has to try to be as best of good stewards tax-free dollars you can. I know Commissioner Gilligan and Commissioner Walton, I talked to them last year for my budget time. And they, you know, kind of asked me to be really as considered as we could. So we came back with a budget this year, the same budget we had last year. So we didn't do any budget increase or anything last year or this year, didn't this year's budget. So can't make no promises for next year, but as of right now, we operate pretty good right now. So.
Let's go ahead and make a promise.
No, ask me too early. Too early to tell.
Thank you for being responsive to that. And I'm on my soapbox again. Some people think, people, you all just ask arbitrarily for anything. So we just enjoy raising taxes and spending money like crazy, but.
Well, I can truly say this from the coroner's office. I mean, we've been blessed. When you talk to other coroners over the state of Georgia and what they're going through and Commissioner, who's at the Capitol together. So when you deal with and talk to other coroners over the state of Georgia and what their process is and where they're at, I'm truly can say we're truly blessed. They don't have a lot of resources that we do have here in the county. They don't have the commissioners and all that. They are not agreeing and everything else. So we are truly blessed and I appreciate y'all for what y'all do and have done. I know everybody don't feel that way because, you know, when you're spending money, it's always gonna be an issue on my tax pair too. So I know how it is. I want my tax dollars to be as efficient as they can be. But at the same time, when you got growth and you got things moving forward and, you know, under circumstances, it's gonna cost more money. Just with resources.
Mr. Chair, update with that. I need to talk to you because ACG recently have adjusted their, their way of thinking about that for you. So that's something we could talk about. And then just another question. You were saying sixteen homicides. Is that including Fort Stewart?
No, sixteen suicides. They, they was, three of them was Fort Stewart cases from last year, but we had a total of sixteen altogether. So in those sixteen, there was three that we know of Fort Stewart. Now, we do have, we still have the, all civilians deaths on Fort Stewart. And we do still have the soldiers off outside the post. So anything on one nineteen, one forty-four, anything in Liberty County, outside the gate, we handle those cases. So we still have that. And we have a whole lot better working relationship with Fort Stewart. A lot of my civilians now is on Fort Stewart. That's actually we have a good have a relationship with versus moving in and out every two, three years. So.
About drug-related?
Drug-related, the drug-related deaths, I don't have a number on it right now, Commissioner, but they will be part of most of the accidentals from last year, which was like twenty-six. So they'd be part of that there, but I can get you the breakdown number of that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. If y'all want to give me the money, I appreciate it, you know, but if not, I understand.
Now, you just made the speech about being frugal now.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'll be frugal now. That's one thing about it. If y'all know my father, y'all know he's frugal along the way. And, you know, if he can get blood out of a turnip and keep squeezing, he gonna keep on squeezing. Thank y'all.
Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you. LCPC, Ms. Marty. Lori's here too.
Yep, yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
The first thing I'm here to present are two waivers, a request for waivers from the requirements to install curb and gutter and to install sidewalks. In our subdivision regulations, we have two provisions here that say that existing public streets that are included in or are adjacent to the development or subdivision shall be developed and improved to the same curb and gutter and sidewalk standards as new streets. And then it goes on to say that the governing authority has the, may approve streets without curb and gutters when the development is designed to be of low-impact design to reduce the quantity and enhance the quality of stormwater runoff. With respect to sidewalks, again, existing public streets that are included in or adjacent to the development or subdivision shall be developed and improved to the same sidewalk standards as new streets. The governing authority may waive the requirement for a sidewalk where unusual conditions exist, which eliminate the necessity for sidewalks. So there's both the requirements and the ability for the governing authority to waive these two requirements. So the first one I'm here to present is Circle K on the corner of Leroy Cofer and East Oglethorpe. What's highlighted here is the entire Salter Field property. But what they're proposing is just in the corner of Leroy Cofer and Oglethorpe. They are proposing accesses on and off each corner, but also another access here, which is off, I think that's Leroy Stephen, Isaac Stevens Road here. There's a median, existing median cut. Zooming in a little bit here. This was actually reviewed by Trent Long's office as the county engineer, not LCPC. But I believe that curb, gutter, and sidewalk would be required at least in this corner, if not maybe all the way up to where that access is coming out across from Isaac Stevens. Currently, there is no sidewalk in the vicinity or curb and gutter. Yes, sir.
Saying that you would require it there or you would not require it?
Well, the regulations in the Unified Development Ordinance do require it. They've requested a waiver to not have to install it.
Mr. Chairman, is this a, I have a problem. Public here?
No, sir.
No, sir. It's a waiver, not a variance.
But is that's all it is? It's just a waiver?
Yes, sir.
Because this has already been, from what I understand, it's already been, the zoning has been changed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Did that.
Yep.
We did that.
I just want to make sure I haven't went to sleep.
No, sir.
Marty, Chairman.
Marty, you said that there is no curb and gutter in that vicinity or just on that?
At least in that corner.
Well, there's some.
In front of St. Peters. In front of St. Peters.
Across the street.
Yes.
Yes.
That to keep the trucks from running over and breaking it? I mean, was there any?
I have no idea why it's not along the whole street.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I think the worst thing you could do is have people walking along through there on sidewalk.
And that's exactly what they explain here in their narrative. It says installation of sidewalk along both sides of the proposed Circle K store development would lack the connectivity to adjacent uses across from Leroy Cofer and on Oglethorpe Highway. Effectively, three sides of the north, south, and west lack complementary sidewalk infrastructure. Circle K is also dominated by vehicular traffic. It is not oriented at this location to have appreciable pedestrian traffic. And furthermore, the adjacent uses to the Circle K store site are not, in our opinion, this is their writing, not LCPC, pedestrian traffic generators to justify pass-through sidewalks to be installed. Additionally, site limitations due to stormwater, to storm infrastructure and drainage will expose pedestrians to hazards, both vehicular and topographical, that would be discouraged, that should be discouraged. And currently, there is no curb, gutter, and sidewalk, no curb and gutter on Leroy Cofer or Oglethorpe. These existing roads currently drain all the water towards the creek at the north, I'm sorry, the southeast of our site and existing ditches along the right-of-way areas. Curb and gutter at these locations will modify the whole drainage system already going on adjacent to both roadways. So that is their justification for making their waiver request.
You're done.
Yes, I am. Sorry.
You know, my only question is, why was Trent?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have an email from Trent I meant to print out, but I still have it on my phone. He says, Marty, we have been in contact with the engineers and developers for the proposed Circle K located at the intersection of Highway eighty-four and State Route one ninety-six. During our conversations, we recommended that they seek a waiver from the sidewalk requirement as well as a curb and gutter requirement. I review your presentation and the justications for the waiver and recommend that this waiver request be approved. He can't not be here. He's in Norway. So.
That helps a lot. I was wondering if the engineer looked at it and made.
Thank you for reminding me.
And of course, I'm thinking long-term too.
Right.
We won't be here always. And if there's a Circle K coming that now, but it's coming tomorrow along that area. And I always trying to be proactive so that we can position Liberty County to be as well-planned as it can be. So it's good to hear about the drainage because it goes back to the creek as versus. We don't want to create a drainage problem as this development starts.
Correct.
Commissioner?
Actually, that goes back toward the wetlands, across over hundred eighty-four and goes back toward the Peacock Canal.
And I agree now, it's not a pedestrian roadway, but that doesn't mean it could not be. I see people walking along eighty-four. But I, what's your, you had time to give this some?
I looked at it and fifty-fifty. I did.
Permission of Public Works, did you have time to kind of kick this around?
I, you know, I don't really see, you know, that pedestrian traffic. I mean, I go that way pretty good bit, you know, a couple of times a week. I know the parsonage from St. Peters is right next to the church. I mean, and then across the street, I think Miss Dryer or someone over there. But I, from the overpass to Homestown, I rarely see any pedestrian traffic. As you get further down, around in the area around Bill Carter Road, Chesley, the baseball field, you know, you may see some people maybe on bicycles or something, but at that intersection, it's rare that I see any kind of pedestrian traffic there. You could, I think you mentioned that putting up a light for someone that in the house, for instance, to go across one ninety-six to the store. I mean, I don't really.
I'm sorry. And there improvements to eighty-four for their, I say improvements, for their egress and?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Which is a plus.
Yes. There's a D cell lane. This is right in, right out off of Oglethorpe. Similarly, a D cell lane, right in, right out.
And further down, it's the same thing.
And then here is where, if you wanted to head back, this, you could turn left at this median break here. So this is a, this is a full access.
Well, I guess I'll trade off road improvements for sidewalk and gutter.
Right.
Speak your mind, sir.
Mr. Chair, I guess I just have a question. I understand that that's the Salter's Field, right?
Correct.
And what's the acreage over there?
It's a big piece of land.
Motor acreage of Salter's Field? That's a good question.
It's a big piece of land. I don't remember.
Thirty, forty, maybe?
Right.
At least.
Sixty, Lori thinks maybe.
Well, okay. And this particular development with Circle K?
I believe that's around two, two and a half, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't review the plans.
Right. So we're looking at another fourteen?
Correct.
I mean, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but what else is he on do with that property but sell it off? I mean, because the synergy is gonna be created with Circle K. And I'm almost certain that somebody else is on come over there as well.
Marty, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm in the chair. I can't tell you to approach, but you can.
You correct. And right here, Marty, before you walk away, if we looking at planning, this is gonna take away the main interest off of eighty-four, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Circle K. So that means nothing else could come in and go out here.
So is that the boundary? Is that the property line?
This is the boundary.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
I thought after not asking if the petition was here. Help us out.
They're here.
I'm Sandy Owens with MDM Services. I was just gonna speak to Mr. Frazier's question. We did put a cross-access through to the rest of the property, but everything to the south that you see there where it looks like trees in the aerial, that's all a wetland. And that wetland will likely be maintained because it's a pretty pristine wetland. So to develop that area, I don't see that happening anytime soon. The space behind Circle K, potentially, yes, I would see that further down the road. But right now, we're just proposing the two and a half acre site.
And even if it did, if I made sure, they would have to come out to Leroy Cofer?
Yep. So the frontage road that we're building there would be access for them, right? So DOT is not gonna give any additional access here.
All right. All right.
Marty, that's sixty acres.
Mr. Frazier, I'm sorry, you guys up in the?
Right. And I mean, I could understand the waivers for the curb and gutter over in that area. But I'm like you, Mr. Chair. I'm just thinking about future development and if.
Well, you can always impose those sidewalks on the next development because they won't, they won't be doing any roadwork. So. I mean, we have three turn lanes that we're putting in plus a frontage road to improve this area for future development. So.
Are you saying we couldn't?
So she's saying kick the can down the road?
We could impose sidewalk on the Leroy Cofer side for future development?
Yes, sir.
So that one, Mr. Chairman, so that I make clear of what she was saying there, that is gonna be a side street?
Like a frontage road.
A frontage road?
Yeah. So.
Did you buy all that property or just?
No, we have an easement for the frontage road.
Okay. For them, and that would be an improvement? That would definitely keep the traffic.
Mr. Chair, but that's my question. I mean, how can we impose for future development and we didn't do it for the initial?
Well, truly, each one is independent of the other. And I feel where you're going, but each one is independent of it. And you look at the impact, I'm just throwing this out, of each development, what it's gonna cost. So if they're only, if they have the access off eighty-four to turn in, and then they're providing the out access to Leroy Cofer, whomever comes will have to locate behind them on an improvement that you've started.
Correct.
Through DOT. So then according to where they locate, then they would have, I would think, obligation to do the curbs, especially the sidewalks. Now, with drainage always, and I'm sorry.
The curb and gutter really can't, can't be done because the existing roadway sheet flows from the center of the road to the ditches on the side of the road. And then those ditches make their way back to the wetland.
And no matter who comes, the drainage is gonna follow that route going to the creek?
Correct.
Okay. Won't go out to eighty-four Leroy Cofer. We're not creating a problem with, as I said, make sure that we don't create future.
If we put curb and gutter there, we would create a problem because the water couldn't get out. So it would have to be a, I mean, you would have to curb and gutter both sides of the road, run pipe, put in structures, pipe it back around to the wetland. It would be an undertaking, I would tell you it would kill this project, yeah.
All right.
Anybody else?
You said M.D.?
MDM Services.
Who is that, tell me who?
It's the engineer.
Okay, all right, all right. We don't get many ladies that come and talk about engineering stuff.
Well, thank you, we're here.
On that side.
Marty's on.
As petition of law.
Marty.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Just hold on right there.
Okay, will do.
Marty, in the future, if we, there are more businesses to come in that area and then the board of commissioners, who of us up here decides that we want to put curb and gutter, have y'all looked at how, how it could be tied in to where, to what we're looking at now?
There aren't any provisions for curbing, for, oh, curb and gutter, not sidewalk.
Right, I can speak to that too. That, that's FDOTs. No, there, there, there isn't.
No.
And that would be a DOT issue.
Yeah, I think when DOT does a medium project, that might come something that they.
That would, yeah.
But, but right here is a side, right here is a side road, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm talking about getting the water off there.
He was telling me everything is going to?
Yeah, everything sheet flows off of that.
Back to the creek.
Okay, all right. Marty, I got one question for you, it's not on here, this is your, everything's been approved on this, right?
Well, the plans haven't been final approved until the waivers are approved.
Okay, so now you still got to go back to fire service, who signs off on it for the fire hydrants out there?
The, it would be the either fire chief, Roney, or I think it was Chief Roney, because that would, it would be your fire marshal.
Okay, and has these, has these plans gone to him yet?
I do not know that, sir, because it, this, this, the review of these plans went through the, the county building and licensing department, not LCPC. I imagine they would, they did.
I hope they will.
Yeah. But I'd have to double-check with Trent on that.
Let's double-check that and let us know.
Sure.
Commissioner Blunt has some concerns, I'm assuming.
That, this Circle K area, what you've got designed there, and I know that area well, some of it's going to go toward the creek like you're talking about, some of it's going to go toward that Leroy Cofor highway. And that potential development, new development, that you don't technically control, but other people will at some point. But that side road existence down there, we made a statement, all that, yeah, all that water is going to go toward the creek. The only way it's going to go toward that creek is someone digs with an excavator, cuts the canal across it, because that's going uphill. Most of that water is going to go toward Leroy Cofor.
Right, but it's not graded to flow towards the road, it's graded to flow away from the road.
I still disagree with that, I know that, I know that piece of property, it's got a lot of high hills in it right there. I mean, we got contractors out there now that's dumping concrete on it, and they go in any time of the year they want with all this water we have.
Yeah, I can't speak to future development, but all of it will have to be reviewed, just like the Circle K is being reviewed, so.
I can go along with the Circle K.
They're grading a drainage plan. Yeah, grading a drainage plan will have to depict that.
Drainage issues have to be addressed in the future.
He's just informing us his concerns about future, part of how they may do there. Yeah, you may be okay with the Circle K, but his, his concern is.
For the future development, mm-hmm.
I think we're wanting to address sidewalks, right?
And curb and gutter, yes, sir.
Will and drain and curb, gutter and creek.
But she, the woman, Marty mentioned that, it was a statement in her, her spiel about the drainage, so we didn't pull it out of the air. See the last sentence? That's what, that's how drainage came up. But I think we're ready.
Yeah, yeah, let's go ahead. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we follow what, the recommendation coming from LCPC.
I don't mean to interrupt, LCPC, we're just presenting, we actually didn't have a recommendation, sir.
For a waiver.
But, but Trent Long did.
Trent Long did, and he's not here, okay, that we grant the waiver.
Motion is second that we grant the waiver as presented with, with, what's the word, from our county, consultation by our county engineer. How about that, okay? In further discussion, all in favor, show your hands, please.
Marty, please check, check on that what I mentioned about the fire service.
One no, okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
We probably need to start asking the resident specialists in that area, and that would be, um, Willow.
She's, she's been known to multitask now.
Willow, Willow said it didn't make a difference to her, she had talked, so I'm fine with Willow.
She, we, we vetted it very well, ma'am.
Let's go to the next.
Thank you, sir. Preliminary plat?
Yes, no, the next one, we have two waiver requests. The next one is for Tradeport Business Center West. This is.
Have I got a?
Oglethorpe and.
Hand out on that one?
It's, it's on the same one.
On the same one, okay.
Yes. It's after the first LCPC logo.
All right, I'm there.
Okay, so here's Oglethorpe and ninety-five, and this is seventeen. This is the Tradeport West property that they own, they have some development up in this area as well. And if I'm not mistaken, that's where the new fire station or EMS station was built on Tradeport West Way. So what they are proposing, this is kind of a general concept business plan. Technically, the only public sidewalk that they would be required to construct and curb and gutter is along this frontage here. However, they are also requesting to not install curb, gutter and sidewalk on the roads within the business center, which would, you know, along here and wherever else they, they build these roads. So just to be clear about that. This is what they provided is, is a narrative with respect to the public sidewalks. There is no existing public sidewalk within a thousand feet of the project site. There are no known plans for a public sidewalk in the vicinity of the project site. And due to the lack of sidewalk within the vicinity of the project, there will be no detrimental impact to the development patterns of the area nor to the general public if the sidewalk were not constructed. With respect to curb and gutters, the proposed roadways will be designed to utilize roadside swales in lieu of curb and gutter to collect and convey stormwater runoff. Vegetative swales are widely recognized as a low-impact design practice that manages stormwater runoff by promoting infiltration, filtration, and natural conveyance. Unlike curb and gutter, which rapidly directs water into storm drains, roadside swales will attenuate runoff and reduce flow velocity. Ultimately, this enhances the quality of stormwater runoff and allows water to percolate into the ground and recharge local aquifers. So a lot of what they're talking about curb and gutter is within the new roads that they will be building in the center, but it also, there are no curb and gutter or sidewalk on the seventeen.
The same general language as your previous presentation?
Yes, sir.
That's a place where there are no previous sidewalk and gutter, no connect, nothing to connect it to, I'm using novice language here. So it would just be, and, and the commissioners may remember or realize that in Tradeport East, there are no sidewalks and gutter, and it works very well in there. And it would just really add extra expense to, to development.
Yes, sir.
I'm on track?
Yes, yes, you are, sir.
Chair, Mr. Chair, Marty.
Yes, sir.
When you said swales, are these swales going to be vegetated or will there be cemented?
No, they would be vegetated swales, yes, sir.
Because a vegetated one is going to grow up and it's going to block the water eventually.
They have to maintain it, just like they do in, in Tradeport East.
All right, the next question, who's going to maintain them?
Development authority.
The, yeah.
We have a contract with people to do that.
Y'all have a contract with that?
Okay, Tradeport East, yeah. Because you want to make sure your, your park looks good, so you got to do all those kind of things to keep it maintained. That way you attract industrial clients by having a good-looking park.
That's why I make sure.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. All right, so, Commissioner, you know the questions? We entertain a motion, then we approve the variance for Tradeport West.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this variance for Tradeport West.
Second, motion is second, we approve with the same concern, I'm sorry.
Waiver.
Waiver, what did I say? variance? Thank you. That we ensure that the drainage, and I'll.
Trent.
Yes, because we don't want to cause any problem with anybody anywhere with Tradeport.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, show your hands, please, all right. Opposition? All right, all right, Ms. Marty.
Okay, my next presentation is for the preliminary plat for Alder Grove Phase Two. This is developers Dryden Enterprises and Walter Bell Properties, he's actually both of those, Claude Dryden. It was designed by Emisac Engineering. It is a hundred and seventeen lots for single-family dwellings on thirty-nine acres that is zoned PUD and located on Isle of White Road in District One. So what we have here, we have Isle of White kind of circles around, Oglethorpe is down here. You'll recarve, you'll recall that Phase One was here, and then they, this was always listed as future development for the original Alder Grove purchase and PUD. And then they recently purchased, I think it was another twenty-two acres or so, that connected out to Isle of White in this location, and that was rezoned as an expansion of the Alder Grove PUD. Again, Isle of White, Oglethorpe, and this is Alder Grove One, and this is the area to be developed for Alder Grove Two. There are four different lot types in this PUD. They range from forty-five hundred square feet, minimum lot size, to eight thousand square feet. And we actually have some of those larger lots in Alder Grove Two. And here's the distribution, so we've now kind of turned things sideways. Isle of White is up here, this is Alder Grove Phase One is down here. So they'll be extending a road, so there'll now be two outlets to Isle of White, a fair distance apart as well. We have, what's in orange are the sixty-three patio lots. The purple are, which is a forty-five hundred square foot, the, the purple are the small, single-family lots. The large, single-family are in green, and those yellow lots are those eight, or seven, rather, executive lots with eight thousand square foot minimum lot size. There will be various detention ponds around the outside as well. There are three sheets to this preliminary plat. We are starting down here, we work our way up to Isle of White. And now we've flipped ourselves around again, I know it gets confusing. So this is Phase One, and they are continuing the roads off from Phase One that were constructed there. A little farther up, and then that brings us out to the very end on Isle of White Road. Parcel and line info. So the proposed dedications to the county that will be included in this when it's final platted are approximately three-quarters of a mile of new streets, stormwater improvements, and the drainage easements for the functional maintenance of the ponds. Water and sewer is being provided by the city of Midway. And then the proposed dedications to the HOA include detention in common areas and wetlands, which total about nine and a half acres. Of course, as you might imagine, the big chunk of that is a wetland tract, not any common area detention area.
Sounds good, doesn't it?
Yeah. This was before the planning commission last month, and they did recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Alder Grove Phase Two with standard conditions.
Go back, show me where that second road is going to come out at.
Big picture here. Best way to show you, so the existing Alder Pass comes out right here. The other one is going to come out right up here, just past Jane Street. So it'll, there's going to be another road that pretty much parallels Jane Street.
So it's going to come out right in the curve?
Nope, right before, after, well before the curb, depending, I guess, which way you're going.
As far as I can remember, Jane Street is right in the curve.
So it's farther away, farther away from Jane Street than the curb? Farther, yes, farther away than Jane Street is from the curb, so. Right here, Jane Street is this street right here, this will come out over here. It's still, I mean, yes, it's still relatively close, but not as close as Jane Street is.
I'm just looking at the safety of all those cars coming out. That's all. And what's the amount of houses you must have, you must have two entry-exit before you can?
The current UDO requires you to have two entrances onto an existing street if you have a hundred and twenty or the potential for a hundred and twenty more homes. So this phase itself has a hundred and seventeen, but it'll have the two entrances to access going through Phase One and then a new access onto Isle of White.
So would that give it three total, or just a two, still two?
Just still two, yep.
I've been down there in the one now for what they have, I've already signed, I've, I've been exploring. So, so are they built out, or is there still some room on the back, on, on Phase?
On Phase One, they're, if they haven't finished their houses, it's probably pretty close to being finished because that prelim, that final plat for Phase One C was, you know, quite a few months ago. They, they go up quickly.
Now, with, following the Commissioner Stevens' question, when it comes to the second entrance to Isle of White Road, who blesses that, would Trent have done that, or, okay? All right, all right.
So, Marty.
Yes, sir.
Where the Sam Roberts tract of land is at? Is it going to come, the roadway is going to come closer to that? Or would it come closer to where they have constructed about four houses on Jane Street? Or would it come up on the southeast side of that?
I don't know the, the four houses that have been constructed on Jane Street.
Yeah, there's four houses right there, coming off of Jane Street. So, I'm just wondering, because if you're coming back to what the four houses that's in construction phase now, you're going to put it right in the curve?
Well, Jane Street is here, they're not coming out over here, they're coming on east of Jane Street.
Okay, but there's another house on that side too now, yeah?
Yeah, so you can see it's a pretty narrow, where it comes out onto Jane Street, it's pretty narrow. So maybe you're talking about there's a house here being built? They, they have a very, the perch, the land that Dryden owns is very small, frontage on Jane Street.
So you're saying that?
Not Jane Street, Isle of White.
Are you saying that roadway is going to come out probably right in front of that cemetery?
I don't know where the cemetery is.
Yes, there is.
It's narrow enough here that you got a sixty-foot right-of-way, and you're only going to have lots on one side, so that's, the lots are eighty feet. See, there probably only is about a hundred, forty to a hundred and fifty feet of road frontage on Isle of White at the new location.
So if this doesn't work, we're going to hold you and Trent responsible?
No, just Trent. He's not here to defend himself, I say that.
As long as he stands, he, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Commissioner?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this. Isle of, Phase Two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the presentation, preliminary plat, Alder Grove Phase Two, Alder Grove coming in, rural Liberty County. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please, and our consultation to that our county engineer has, has signed up on.
I'll abstain from that one.
Okay, all right, one abstention, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. I need to interject something right here while we do it. We are approving all of these subdivisions on that end of the county, and the convenience centers down there is being overrun every day now, every day. So we need to take a serious look at the convenience centers. I know we, we talked about it, but we have not made any move in solid waste, Mr. Wells. His people is working hard to try to keep it, keep it up, it's just not big enough.
Let's just remind, Mr. Long was working on that, Ms. Mosley, let's just get an update from him on where that whole process is.
But, Ms., Ms. Stevens, so you're thinking that we need an additional one, or they need to go by that one more often than?
Who's going to, who's going to relocate it?
No, I think our plans was, Commissioner Gillett, was to move it out of that intersection, move it further back and make it larger.
Yes.
Toward, uh.
What, two years?
What's the road name, I can't think of the road.
Quarterman.
No, not Quarterman, and there's another road coming, Missy Homes.
Missy Homes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, but we would, we would build a bigger one?
Bigger one, right.
Right there?
And close that one out?
Yeah, because right there where that one is at now is interfering with the traffic coming out of Isle of White. They can't put a right turn lane right there. So Quarterman Road will be closed off and come out through Missy Homes.
What is the distance inside the, to the city limits in Midway? Is that in, in the city of Midway?
That's in the seven hundred feet.
Do what now?
That's within the seven hundred feet of city limits of Midway.
The subdivision?
No, no. No.
The transfer station.
The transfer station you're talking about?
And you're right.
You're probably talking about.
I'm trying to determine, does the city of Midway need to be looking at this, paying attention to what the growth is down there?
No, as long as it's within the county.
Yeah. And, you know, some of those people will use a contracted waste company. They'll have dumpsters. But as it is right now, he's right, that one stays pretty full. You mentioned that not long ago.
Right.
And that's what caused us to relook at it. But I just don't know where, how far along Trent has gotten with it.
Well, we need to find out and get behind him and push it. If he can't do the job, get somebody else to do it.
You done, young lady? You took a breather.
I'm sorry.
Took a breather, that's your heart.
Okay, so.
Now we need to go into public hearing?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right. Public hearing for rezoning petition, 2025-30LC.
Yeah, so this was a petition submitted by Thomas Concrete of South Carolina on behalf of owner Ricky Reeves to rezone approximately 3.61 acres of a total parcel that's 43.41 acres from AR1 Agricultural Residential and A1 Agricultural to I1 Industrial for a concrete plant. The property is located on Leroy Cofer Highway and is described as a portion of parcel 206091, and it is in District Four. Public notification that was in the paper and our location map. So here we have Fleming Loop Road and Highway 17. I would point out here, it's not going to be easy to see, but, well, you're not going to be able to see it. There is a median break right around here where the R and the O are in Leroy. And then there is another median break right here that'll factor in because I'm going to be talking about access and improvements that need to be made to Leroy Cofer. But this is the total of the 43-acre, 46-acre parcel, and they are proposing to rezone just a portion in that southwest corner. You zoom in a little bit. You can just see the D cell lane is starting here on that median break that's right here. And it's this corner, it goes just past the Atlanta Power Gas Light Company easement that runs through here, and it goes up to this existing dirt road where there is an existing access off of Leroy Cofer already. As I mentioned, this property is currently zoned both AR1 and A1. It's just a very small portion of it that's zoned A1, and most of it is zoned AR1 here. There is, the red is existing commercial property in the, somewhat in the vicinity down here and on Coastal Highway. And then there is a large chunk of industrial off Pate Rogers Road. There is no flood plain, flood zone on the portion that's to be rezoned, but there is some on the back portion of the entire parcel. And the same is true with the wetlands. There's some wetlands on the main parcel, but not on the portion that's being rezoned. And here is a survey of what's to be rezoned. You can see it goes just beyond, this is the Atlanta Gas Light Company easement here, and Leroy Cofer is here. So the narrative, they are, Thomas Concrete respectfully requests consideration to rezone for this property on Leroy Cofer. Thomas Concrete is a privately-held, family-owned company currently operating 80 ready-mixed concrete plants throughout Georgia and the Carolinas. They aim to meet the increasing demand for ready-mixed concrete in Liberty County. Now, I'm going to interject here. This project, because it's a concrete plant, did qualify as needing, being a development of regional impact. So it did have to go through that whole process. And there were five points here that were brought up in that report that they're addressing. So it says, "As outlined in the Development Review Committee report, we are aware of the comments and concerns raised during the agency review." And they make, and so the first one they're addressing is site development and oversight. A geographical study, a geotechnical study will be completed prior to construction, and the structural plans will be reviewed by a licensed engineer and will be, comply with the, excuse me, the county's development procedures and ordinances. Traffic and site access. The plant will operate approximately five ready-mixed trucks daily entering and exiting the site via Leroy Cofer. And they are committed to complying with GDOT access requirements and will coordinate to address any additional improvements of permitting as required. Noise and compatibility was something else that was brought up in the DRI report. And noise and dust control measures will be implemented to minimize off-site impacts at all times. The site will include appropriate buffers to ensure compatibility with surrounding properties. Environmental compliance. Freshwater well will support plant operations. However, the facility will prioritize water recycling through an engineered retention pond and wear system enabling water to be reused in daily operations. That all necessary permits required by local and state and federal regulations will be, will be obtained. And then third-party oversight was another concern. And so they have hired, contracted Bowen Environmental Services out of Beaufort to assist with their environmental health and safety setup, permitting, and regulatory compliance for the project. The plant will create approximately eight local jobs and contribute to infrastructure development in Liberty County. And they appreciate the opportunity to bring their experience and commitment to safety, compliance, and environmental stewardship to the community. So this is the sign on the property looking south towards, back towards Heinzville. You can see it's wooded on both sides. And I'm going to show you three concept plans. This is kind of a basic one. This is that existing driveway. And you'll see here, they are showing a D cell lane into the property. And they are showing a median break opposite that. So you will be able to go straight. And of course, the D cell lane, I'm sorry, the median break will have a left turn lane as well. So these are the site improvements that have been discussed with GDOT and the county engineer. Gives you a better view. So they are proposing, or LCP, they're proposing, and the planning commission is also recommending a 20-foot buffer along these property lines here. And this is parking. This is the plant, the storage of materials. This is a future shop, and their recycling water area is back here. And then another view showing that as well, the plant and storage areas. So moving on to our zoning analysis. Does this property have reasonable economic value as currently proposed? It does. Does proposed use conform to the Fort Stewart Joint Land Use Study? It does. Does proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? It does. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as mixed-use rural quarter, as you might have remembered from previous rezonings. It's basically a swath on either side of Leroy Cofer. And that does include industrial as a secondary use. Will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? No, it will not. It is suitable in use of near, in view of nearby uses. Will the proposing, propose, will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation and on schools, utilities, and the provision of public safety? And GDOT approval will be required for the entrance to the site. And I have more information on that as we go in further. This will not allow a short-term gain at the expense of our local long-term goals. Would this change cause a domino effect? Yes, very likely. You've already seen other areas along Leroy Cofer being rezoned for other uses. Are there unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? None were noted. This parcel in the flood hazard area, not the portion that is being rezoned, isn't? Is it spot zoning unrelated to existing pattern of development? It is not. Are there unique conditions which support approval or denial? There are none noted. So when this was before the planning commission last month, these were two special conditions that were their recommendation. Per the county engineer, GDOT will acquire a D cell lane. Additionally, the county engineer recommends that a left turn lane with median break be installed on Leroy Cofer Highway at the entrance to the property in order to minimize the number of U-turns at the existing median breaks that I pointed out to on either side of this property. Based on this information from the county engineer, applicant shall provide documentation from GDOT regarding its requirements for this use at this location prior to consideration by the Board of Commissioners. And then they require a 20-foot buffer, which is unaffected. So to this point, the applicant did go to GDOT. And they did, Joseph from Thomas Concrete did speak with Joe Capello and Dan Summers from GDOT. And they discussed the required engineering plans for issuance of a construction permit for the state right-of-way along with an executed lease agreement for the proposed parcel. They discussed the encroachment permit process with submittals by their engineer to GDOT. Improvements would be applicable, disband the full length of the right-of-way, plan to show left turn option leaving the site along with proposed median breaks, temporary access of the right-of-way during construction, and then an escrow, which is typically required by GDOT anyhow, the letter of escrow or bond. And then Mr. Summers from GDOT responded. I would just, I would just also add that a right turn lane will also be required due to the drive serving the rest of the property in the future. We will probably, we will potentially require a hydro study, not related to drainage, and the allowance of full access with a median break is pending GDOT review as well. And if approved, will require a full left turn lane. So all those things that is mentioned in here were shown on those concept plans. But GDOT is aware of this and will likely require all that information, so. Planning Commission did recommend approval of rezoning petition 2025-30-LC with standard and special conditions. And condition one has been met. And so they, pretty much the remaining condition is that a 20-foot vegetated buffer shall be required along Leroy Cofer Highway and the west side of the property.
Is the petition there here, ma'am?
Yes, they are.
Just give us a brief overview of the project, please, sir, so we can hear from you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, thank you all for the.
Before you begin, did anybody sign up for public participation? We did, okay, all right.
All right. Thank you again, Chairman Lovett, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. As we said in our narrative, Thomas Concrete is a family-owned and operated company in the southeast United States. We operate 80 ready-mixed plants. We have recognized an opportunity for growth into Liberty County to service both Bryan County customers and also the Liberty County area. And we appreciate your consideration for this. Just want to go back to the, the concept plan was ba, this was reworked after the zoning hearing. And it, as Marty said, it does include the left-hand turn lane and the median break as recommended by Mr. Long, as well as the D cell lane coming into the property off the westbound of Leroy Cofer. And then as far as, you know, just speaking a little bit about our company, Thomas Concrete, we take the environmental side of our business. Sometimes that can get, in the industry, it can get a little skewed. We take that very serious. And that's why we reference Bowen Environmental as a third party that we retain on staff at all times for, you know, to make sure that we're doing what we, what we say we do internally. So they help with stormwater management, any sort of environmental, environmental requirements permitting. That would be such, such as, like, for example, the recycle retention pond in the middle of the property. That would be a way that we lessen our burden by reusing all, all available water in our daily operation. And then the top-left pond.
The pond, there's a pond on there somewhere.
Yeah, so this pond would be more of a kind of worst-case scenario, stormwater runoff capture, surrounded by a green space. And then this would be the more functioning recycle retention pond that we would utilize for daily production. We've also proposed all surface area, all improved surface area will be either crush-stoned or pervious concrete, again, to lessen that burden of processed water runoff.
Mr. Chairman?
I've got a, I've got a couple of things. You're drawing right there where you come off the highway on the pavement, and then it goes to dirt, and then you've got your areas, two driveways that you come into your plant. The road, I'm just going to call it, Rick still owns the road, correct? Is that dirt road going to hold up for your heavy traffic?
We would anticipate improving all along this road with either asphalt millions.
Rick owns it, but he still won't be okay with that, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Back there.
And I know I've got some people viewing that's got some questions. Is it time to get into that just yet or?
I'll bring them up for just a minute, you.
No, I didn't really mean them. I'm talking to someone that's talking to me.
Well, sure, sure.
Okay. This is a concrete plant. Some people in the area have heard, they worried about smoke stacks and all that. Just for the viewing public, you have none of that. You're a concrete plant. You're not an asphalt plant with smoke stacks and that type of stuff, right?
Correct. We will discharge, I mean, there is some dust associated with concrete, but it will be alleviated through what's a dust collector. So we have dust suppression and control on all our sites. But the dust collector is basically a giant vacuum at the load point that draws any fugitive dust up and recycles back into our silos.
I just wanted to explain like you just did for the viewing public and everything. How you do medium breaks, everything?
You good with that? Okay. Mr., I'm sorry.
Yes. Did you give your name, sir?
Yes, sir, Joseph Bernard.
Oh, Mr. Bernard. This, in 21, at the bottom end of this, the 20, 20-foot vegetated buffer, that's 20 feet long?
Uh, 20 feet wide on the, on the west and south.
And do you know what kind of vegetation? What kind of vegetation?
There's currently vegetation there. I believe it's about 50, about 50 feet wide, just.
pine trees and stuff?
Yes, sir. So our, we would reduce it by some, our hope is to actually leave more than the, than the required 20-foot wherever possible on the south and west border of the property.
I did think about something else that I can give for reminding.
Well, I wasn't finished, but. Well, I'll remind you when.
I'm sorry.
And number one, the storage, what was, what are you storing there?
Uh, so that will be, this right here will just be sand and stone, crushed stone aggregate for, uh, that'll be fed into this hopper here and run up into the plant.
And the buffer will go to, what would that be, the 21? That would be the west, the west side of this? You have 20-feet buffer on that side as well?
Yes, sir. So 20-foot buffer along, along the front of Leroy Cofer, and then on the west side of the property bordering Mr. Zen's parcel.
Go ahead, Tim.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
When you're going into the property right now, and I know y'all didn't clear this, probably Rick did, you first go in there, there's a clearing area on the left.
Yes, sir.
That goes right over to Mr., how you say his last name?
Zen. Zen.
I'm not sure if that goes all the way to his property or not, but it's going to be close. Have you looked at that to see just how close you are to his property line yet?
I believe, I have not measured it, but I believe there's about 100 feet on the other side of that clearing to Mr. Zen's property. Again, I have not measured that, but I estimate the current buffer here to be about 50. And this is to scale that, so that is the 20-foot to scale vegetated buffer. Again, we believe.
I was actually talking about where your number 21 is.
Right.
Right in there, there's an opening right there.
So I believe we'll have to cut out some of the vegetation that's currently there. But I, again, this is just my eyeball measurement. I believe there's about 100 feet currently. The clearing, it may be an acre, and this site will be 3.6. So a lot of it's kind of in that western direction will be what we, what we carve out.
You think you're about 100 feet from that clearing over to his property line?
I believe so. And again, our intention is to leave more than 20 feet wherever possible.
Ms. Mosley, who is it that wants to speak from the public? Don't go far.
I have a question.
Oh, you got a question? Okay, I'm sorry.
On your dust collector, is it going to be nylon socks tubing or is it going to be a container aluminum silo?
It's, uh, they're, they're steel, so there'd be a rubber shroud around the load point, but the actual piping for the dust collector is all steel.
So there's no 100% escapable dust?
I won't say 100%. But, but within, you know, state DNR regulations for sure. As far as, as far as fugitive dust.
Okay.
My check. There we go. Just a quick question about that, that side of the road. Is that a public road or is it, is it private?
This road.
Private road.
I believe that's private, held by Mr. Reeves.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one question that, that maybe he can he, uh, help me or Marty or, but where, where's the closest home to this property? Like a residence, not, not the property line, but the closest home. Is it way back in the back or Mr. Zen?
They carved this out of a big piece.
I see it's in the corner, but where, do you know about where?
It was the best one if you backed up. Marty, if we backed up, that would be the best one.
Go back, he said.
Back to this one?
Yeah.
About where, where's the home?
To the right of your diagonal, your angled line. Go to your right, right in there. There you go, right there. There's your driveway right there. That's going to be your closest home.
There's a, there's, there's a, a residence? Okay. How, how many petitioners or did you send out within the 250? And how many did you have at the meeting? Did any oppose?
Yes, we did. Mr. Ms., oh, Mr. Zen.
Was the only one out of the?
Yes, and Mr. Zen owns this property here and then one of them across the, one of these over here. I'm not sure which one. He can point it out to you.
Okay, okay, but he's about a quarter of a mile. His actual residence, where he actually lives, is about a quarter mile from the plant.
That's what Commissioner Blunt says.
I have to ask him. I don't know exactly where he owns the property.
Okay, he, he's got representative here. Okay, okay, I see. I know, I see. Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
I just wanted to, I've been listening to a lot of stuff like every one of the other commissioners, and we're all concerned about trying to do the right thing. And a lot of times that we, we do, and a lot of times we err on the side of caution. But, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, number one, it's going to create possibly 10 jobs. And Commissioner Stevens can tell you as good as anybody, we just lost an industry on one end of the county that I don't know, well, you, you used to work there or you shut up?
I got a check, baby. I got a check.
I'm just trying to say that, you know, if, if we can create jobs and, and I don't, I drive by a concrete plant three or four times a day at the overpass. And I've, you know, I've never seen a crash or nothing, but I'm just saying that we need to concentrate a lot of times on that. Work with your neighbors whichever way you possibly can. I know that these trucks aren't going to drive themselves, so there may be a truck driver that worked at Interstate Paper that gets a job down there. There may be some that live on that road that gets a job. I mean, we just approved one just down the road about two miles for a man that wants to operate a, a shop to work on tires and Winnebagoes, I believe. And, you know, we stopped it because we really weren't sure about his distance to pull out on the road and a few other things. But, you know, if you, if we're going to create jobs, that's, that's one of the most important things we can do in Liberty County right now, because you don't ever know when the next one is going to lose his. So I just won't, and I'm sure the board has taken it into consideration. All of us are from here, so we just, let's, um, let's make sure that we do have a product that we know we can sell, and it will sell, whether it's in Liberty County, Bryan County, or wherever. But, uh, let's make sure that your project that you got is pretty much on spot, that if anybody comes in and looks at it, it's going to be looking somewhere like you talked about it going to be. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bonner, let's have the, the names, please, sir. If you just stay close, maybe sit on that first row with us, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, we have Andre S. Johnson who signed up to respond.
Johnson? Give your name for the matter of record, please, and then state your case.
All right. My name is Andrew Johnson.
Andrew.
You're fine, you're fine. I curse my handwriting my whole life. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here representing Mr. John Zen, property owner. I know Commissioner Threch was asking about who owns what?
proximity.
The green one that points?
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Zen owns this piece, he owns this piece, and he owns this piece. That's, uh, 206-078, 206-079, and 230, 234-002. Mr. Zen's mother lives on 002, 002. Obviously, Mr. Zen is very concerned because here's the proposed project. Mr. Zen owns, I think this is a 60-acre piece right here, and he's very concerned about having an industrial property right there at his, at his back door. I'd like to point out, let's see, I'm going in the right direction, maybe not. So here's the zoning map. There's no, this is some industrial property right here. From Freedman's Grove to 17 is about 15,000 feet. There's no industrial property on that road. There's this little piece of commercial property right there, which I understand used to be a gas station that burned down in the 1970s and 1980s, and right now it's a storage yard. So when we were talking earlier and going, and they're going through the zoning criteria, one of the things they talked about was whether, whether or not this potentially would cause a domino effect. And I, I think commissioners, that's what you're going to, that's what you're going to have here is a domino effect. There is no industrial two and a half miles. There's nothing. All you see is trees. You saw the nice picture earlier with, with the, the placard advertising zoning. All you see is pine trees on that road. And that, most of the development that's been on that road since they forward-lined it, I don't know, 16 years ago, has been a lot of single-family residences. I understand that when the, under the comprehensive plan, it states that it is a, a mixed-use rural corridor, but it's industrial is allowed, but it says industrial is a secondary use. So I get, industrial is a secondary use, to me, does not mean anytime someone comes up with a plan to put industrial product on that, on the corridor, and that the commission, that the commissioner needs to look at the comprehensive plan and say, oh, yeah, let's put it there. So go, go through the criteria outlined in the zo, in the zoning ordinance, or does it, does a property have value as currently zoned? And you heard your commissioner, you heard your LCPC personnel, yes, it does currently have value as currently zoned. The second crit, the second thing to look at was, does it follow the comprehensive plan? The opinion from the LCPC was that it does follow, follow the comprehensive plan, but I would just add again that this, that industrial is a secondary use. Going right there, I don't see any reason to put industrial to be the only piece of industrial property for two and a half miles and put it right smack in the middle of, which is, which is a beautiful entrance corridor towards Liberty County. Talked about adverse effect on nearby properties. You're surrounded, you're surrounded by trees, you're surrounded by single-family residences, and you're going to put a concrete plant right in, right, right in the middle of it. I tell you, argue with you commissioners that that is an adverse effect on, on properties. Is it suitable? Again, I don't believe so. Finally, it is a domino effect, and I, and your commission did state, I mean, your LCPC did appone to you that they would probably and all likelihood cause a domino effect. And then I was looking, going back, something I was curious about. They state that they want to serve Liberty County. I see a, I see a D cell lane. I don't see an acceleration lane facing in, in the direction of Liberty County, which I'd assume the concrete trucks would be using if they were going to be serving Liberty County. So again, my client's been here in Liberty County for a long time, raises kids here in Liberty County, and he owns three different parcels of land right next to it, across the street, over 100 acres. And this, this plant would, would just cause a severe, a depth of, horrible effect on his property and what he's bought for, what he's worked for. At the request of LCPC, LCPC requested a, a buffer, which, which we appreciate LCPC, I mean, the planning commission listening to our concerns. Number one, we prefer the property not be rezoned, but two, we request, if, if the commission were to approve it, we'd request a much more extensive buffer to protect my client's interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Max, those three pieces of property that you showed up there, what's on those properties now?
Right now, right now, the only thing that's on it is my client's mother is living on this one.
Okay, and the other two?
The other, the other two are, are woods and my client hunts. He's got a little garden on one of them.
Good.
You said there was a, a man owned that property ahead of time, uh, Rick.
Rick still owns it.
And that where he, he hauled all of his logs and burnt it trash?
In the back, in the back, behind the gas line, yes, sir.
So it's already been used as a commercial business?
Still be used as one right now? Where they haul in stuff and grind it up, everything?
But he's still using it?
Still using it right now, today, every day. Multiple trucks from all across Liberty County that, with the jobs you're talking about need to be created, they got their jobs. We ain't able to haul that stuff in, and Rick's grinding it up. I'm sure he's making a profit, but that's business.
You're right. That's what it's in there for, to make good, make money.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please, Mr. Mosley. That's it. I thought there was more than one.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, yes, sir. Are you live in that area, sir?
No, sir.
So what's your, what's your connection, then? Help me, help me validate.
Yes, sir.
Other than, are you a citizen of Liberty County, Georgia?
I'm sorry?
Do you live in Liberty County?
I do not.
Kind of sticky, my friend. Go, you into the mic.
Cannot speak?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, my name's Eric Metz. Uh, I work for Pulte Homes, which is a home builder within the region, uh, in and around Savannah, Georgia, as well as through the Carolinas. I am here to lobby for the rezoning of this parcel in behalf of Thomas Concrete. Obviously, they support me and my business with home building as my, they would have benefits for other businesses in and around Liberty County as well. And I can speak to Thomas Concrete as I've been a longstanding customer for them for over two decades, uh, within my entire career. They have a class of first-class operation. Their owners and operators are class individuals, uh, and I can really speak to the integrity of the business that they run, as well as the culture within their organization. So they seek to do the right thing, take care of their customers as well as their community. So they'd be a good asset for Liberty County, and I would support their initiative as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all have his name? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Marty? Commissioners, it's in our court?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Let me say this, and you may say this, so I'm trying to do a, a, a raw look at it. If you would, I know you said you're going to maintain a 20-foot buffer. Is there more than 20 feet of buffer now on the frontage on Leroy Coffer?
I believe so.
Yes.
Here's where I'm headed. As much as that as you can leave, leave. I don't know how to put that into, Marty, we have to put that into?
Mr. Chairman, make that as part of your condition.
Part of the condition, yes, sir. Uh, because we want to, the more, it is a concrete plant, and, and, and if you handle it well, uh, it could, it could be done well and have a good presentation, but we don't need to advertise it, you know, so leave as much buffer as you can. Make it as natural-looking, that's what I'm here, as you can. Now, who, who monitors dust and all that kind of stuff? I know some, who comes to?
Thank you, PT.
Who does that periodically? Jeff, you know who that is?
EPD.
Georgia EPD or, uh, DNR.
So, so they come periodically to inspect you to make sure that you're doing what you're doing, because who talked about the dust? We want to make sure that even though there's no houses adjacent to, we make sure you're not creating an environmental nightmare for us on Leroy Coffer. And, and it was, uh, mixed use? Am I right? Mixed use? We, we knew some commercial may be coming. We didn't know, you say industrial secondary, but we didn't know what might come, but this is your chance to make it work.
Yeah, yes, sir, absolutely.
Or make it not work.
And we will, uh, as, as just kind of a standard operating procedure, we will qualify all of the equipment on-site with the Department of Natural Resources. So each, each dust collection, uh, equipment comes with a, a unique identification number. That's all registered with the state, and, and in conjunction with that, has to be maintained to their standards.
And you're on a road now that we used to, some, some people call it I-196, for obvious reasons. And people are used to going at a certain rate of speed on the highway.
Yes, sir.
Trying to ensure that we're safe, that the trucks coming in, you know, doesn't change the safety factor on, on 196.
Correct.
As well as when they come out not spilling cement.
Correct.
You know?
Yes, sir.
On, on our highway. So let's keep all those things in mind. Once again, you know, you may be the trailblazer, but you hurt others behind you if this is not handled well.
Yes, sir. Understood.
All right, okay.
Right, uh, just real quick question. That same, that same road, so that road is going to be the entrance and the exit for like the trucks as well, right?
Yes, sir. The, Mr. Reeves' road, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, is, is that dirt or?
It's currently dirt, so that the, the easement would be improved per GDOT specifications, the entire length of the easement. And then our driveway, uh... So our driveways entering and exiting the properties would be improved surface, but again, permeable improved surface. And then we would anticipate, um, improving this entire span of, of Mr. Reeves' road as well.
Mr. Bernard, Gary, did you, I didn't mean to interrupt you again.
No, well, I, you know, he was saying that you would improve that road, but I mean, but that would be for your own benefit.
Right.
I mean, that, that's not nothing that.
No, for us.
That, that's, that we would have to do, nothing that, that you would have to do if, you know, if potholes develop or the road needed to be graded, something like, I mean, that, that's all on you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I mean, that's for your, for your benefit, the road.
Correct.
Yeah, you and, I guess, Mr. Reeves or whoever else go down there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's private.
Correct.
Okay. I, I did, um, not a question for Mr. Bernard, but I did have, um, uh, Mr. Johnson, if he could come back, Mayor.
Sure.
I mean, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I know you have, I'll sleep between two, two government bodies.
I was trying to get your promotion.
Mr. Johnson, I've, um, these 12 standard questions that we have in our zoning analysis, and I, I had to step out in the back, but you, um, uh, the yes and the no answers, and some of them got, um, some detailed explanations. You disagreed with, um, with some of them?
I disagree, yes, sir. Give me a sec.
Which, which, which was the first one that you agreed with? And, um, is it based on, what, what was your disagreement, based on a fact or feeling or, or what?
Uh, well, first, first one I agree with, and both me and LCPC agreed, there's a property currently has economic value. I disagreed with the interpretation on number two, just the proceeds confirmed the land use study. And then the land use stud, under the, sorry, sorry, I agree with the number two. Number three in the comprehensive plan, uh, it says the property is a mixed-use rural corridor, but industrial is a secondary use. To, to me, when it, when it, and I, I read the comprehensive plan, I didn't, I didn't see it go any further other than to say secondary. To, to me, when it, when it, and I, I read the comprehensive plan, I didn't, I didn't see it go any further other than to say secondary use. But to me, secondary use means, you know, you look at other things first. So I, I, to me, when I'm reading that, again, without any further guidance in the comprehensive plan, I'd be, I'd be wondering, okay, is, is there other industri- is there other industrial on, on the corridor? Are there other locations? I mean, if there's industrial uses popped up all around it, I'd say more, hey, then, then yeah, it would, would be a secondary land use. But this, like I said previously, fifteen thousand feet, no industrial use. I, I don't, I don't think this necessarily would qualify as, as a typical secondary use. And then...
You said it's not a typical secondary?
Second, secondary use, I mean, it, I, again, sir, Commissioner, fifteen thousand feet, there's no industri- no industry, you know, you, I, I would see se- industrial as a secondary use if there was other industry around the area, if, if this was what was coming, if there was, if there was, uh, a progression of industrial use all around it, then, then I'd be looking at it more like, yeah, that, that makes sense. But there is no industry, industry, uh, around this particular parcel.
But I, I stopped right there. The, the planning commission is stating that the comprehensive plan designates this property as mixed use, so mixed mean more than just one use, right? That, that would be mixed.
Yes.
A mixture.
Absolutely, yep.
And it said that, um, and that's one. You, you know, so, but when you mix it, you can bring in that, that second one, uh, or third, or however many mixes you put in there, but it said that it includes industrial as a secondary use.
Like I said, as a secondary use, I mean, the primary, that, that's my interpretations.
But, but.
That's his interpretation.
But, but you, but you could keep, you go first, second, third. I mean, you, you don't have to stop at first. If the, if the plan allows for something in addition, you, you don't have to stop at there.
The plan allows for something in addition, but that doesn't mean you as the commission have to, have to allow it. You use the commission, you use the commission, look at the surrounding uses, look at the development.
We, we, we don't, we don't have to do a lot that we don't have to do, right? Yeah, okay. And did, did you have any other that?
The only other, the other one I pointed out was item five.
For five?
Yes, sir.
And it's proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses.
Yes, sir, and I'm going, and I'll go back to what I've been, my, my biggest point since the beginning.
There's some other.
This is, this is the property. All the way to, all the way to seventeen. All the way to Freedom Grove.
Anybody can buy it, yeah.
I mean, it's behind there, behind that place, the concrete places where they're, um, grinding the wood. And that would be, that's not a, that's not a residential, that's a commercial top operation.
I think it's a commercial operation that's allowed in the agri- agricultural. Agricultural district. If it was a commercial, if it was a commercial use, it was, I believe LCPC or someone would have come by and told them to stop. Grinding stumps down is something I think you're allowed to do under the ordinance in, in an agricultural district.
I think, I think it's, it probably at one time was, was, um, agricultural because it had, it was cutting trees or something like that.
Right, I believe that the Yuma's.
I think now, all the trees are cut down and they're, they're, um, they're grinding them, but, um, I, I mean, Ms. Chairman, you mentioned something there about the, the buffer, um, and you was wanting to figure, I, I just wanted to point out that I'm sure that Commissioner Blunt's seen it, and probably everyone in this room has seen, but when you get to seventeen, we have an area there that was designated as a entranceway.
Gateway.
The worst-looking thing that you could have, so I would say before this gentleman, uh, starts planting his, um, azaleas or, um, oleanders or whatever else that we get down there and fix out of.
That's another subject now.
There's more to it, sir.
That's another subject now.
Well, I'm just saying.
Point well taken.
I don't, I don't feel right asking somebody to do something.
But we didn't actually have to plant, ask him to leave what he has, it's already there.
Well, right, but.
You know, and, and.
Yeah, we asked him to plant more, just leave what he has there, yeah.
And I'll close with this, Mr. Chairman, on, on that, that, that twenty-foot buffer, uh, before the, the concrete plant was, um, you know, planning to do something in that, um, in that southwest corner, um, you know, when, when I do go that way, I mean, whatever Rick is doing, I could see that as, um, I, I mean, so what, does Rick have a buffer there?
Only what's there right now.
Only what's there?
Because he owns it.
But I could see everything he's doing.
Mm-hmm.
From ground, from the ground to, from the.
Yeah.
So where, where's, is the buffer going to be planted or is the buffer?
Already there, it's existing.
It's already existing naturally.
It's existing.
Oh, pine trees.
Right, but what is the buffer supposed to kind of camouflage what Rick is doing?
Not Rick, Rick is doing.
Okay, I think you're talking about different, if I may speak, I think you're talking about different pieces of property.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
He talks about.
He's got two pieces down there.
Well, where, where's the Rick Tree Service property? That's not this.
Down by the bridge.
Behind it.
By Arcadia.
Well, he, Rick's Tree Service owns the road going in, everything to the right, you know, and currently right now.
Send it back.
He was going to lease to these people, a long-term lease, you know, and then once you cross.
All right, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Ms. Andrew. Andrew, don't I know you from Public Defenders?
Don't do a lot of different ads, I work with Craig, Jeff and Craig across the way.
I, I thought you were a familiar face, sir.
Yes, sir.
You from here, really? I'm from South Carolina.
He's been around a while.
I've been here for about twenty years, sir.
Yeah?
Really?
I've hunted with you.
Where are you working?
All right, let's get back on track.
I never have seen you before.
I work with Jeff and Craig.
Mr. Bar.
Oh, 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 okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I knew him.
I got, I got one question to kind of clear something up for our viewers. You know, the median break in the XL and D cell lanes?
Yes, sir.
You know, is that something the state's going to fund, or is that something Thomas Concrete has to fund?
That's something that we're prepared to budgeted to fully fund ourselves.
Thomas Concrete?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make it clear for the viewers, because they holler about taxes and everything anyway, wanted to make sure they understand.
That was included in our budget proposal, uh, for our board.
That's, that's my last question.
All right, guess everybody, right?
Yep.
Let's, let's, let's come out of public hearing, Mr.
Let's do.
Second.
All in favor? Now, Commissioner Blunt, this is your area, we'll entertain your motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that, uh, we had approved what LCPC's put before, shared a rezoning petition of twenty twenty-five dash thirty dash LC, and all with the special conditions and everything noted. And I'll, I'll make a motion we approve that.
Second. Motion second, we approve the LCPC's recommendation with, and you all have all the, only thing we added was that he, um, the.
Enhance the buffer.
Enhance the buff, thank you, I was saying the word buffer on.
Good faith.
Yes, sir.
I can do as good.
All right, all in favor, show hands, okay. Thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
Buffer was already in the conditions.
We add it.
It was already in there.
Additional on the front?
Additional.
Yeah, we're trying to get, twenty was the minimum, he actually has more he can give to what the buffer, so we asked him to leave as much kind of camouflage it. Conditional use. Lori.
Good afternoon, Chairman and the Board. The last one we have is a conditional use two oh two five dash three two LC. A conditional use request has been submitted by owner Laura Steele to have a hair salon as a type B home occupation at the residence at nine seventy-two Lake Pomona Road. Um, it is in the unincorporated area of the county, and the total property is twelve point six acres. The mapping parcel number is three six B zero one zero. This is just a public notifications we had to put out, the Google ad and the rezoning sign. The vicinity map, I'm sure most of you guys know, it's off of Islands Highway down to Camp Viking Road down Lake Pomona. If you're going around, you're going to go to Bluff Creek, and if you go all the way around, you'll end up over at Yellow Bluff. Um, this is a close-up, I'm just showing the, the property, it's down, like I said, near Bluff Creek, this is Deloach Road, but this is the whole piece here, it's the twelve acres. And the zoning map, some of the, um, zoning is R twelve and R eight. The pink, most of it is, um, in the ag, and this is the proposed piece we're speaking of, which is, um, AR one. Um, the next slide, there, there is some flood plain, there's about five or six acres, um, that's uplands, and that's where the house is going to be built. You probably can see it better on the wetlands side, but it's right in this area here, um, out of the twelve acres that is, um, not in a flood plain. And the same for the wetlands map, the area in the brown here is where the home is being built, and it's out of the wetlands. And I'll read Ms. Steele's narrative, um, just the main points out of it. Ms. Steele is requesting a type B home occupation license for back porch salon located at nine seventy-two Lake Pomona Road in Midway. Um, her property is twelve acres. The salon will have one single chair with accessory retail sales, operating in a hundred and ten square foot room. Um, and it has an exterior entrance and an exit. The salon operations will have no impact to the neighbors or the roadway. Ms. Steele is a licensed master cosmetologist in Georgia. The back porch salon will be licensed facility with all Georgia State Board Cosmetology and Barber's, and will follow the rules and the regulations of all health and safety protocols. Ms. Steele did run a successful in-home licensed hair salon in Mead, Colorado for over twelve years, and the intent is to provide cosmetology services to the local residents, Sunbury, um, Colonel's Island and the surrounding areas, saving customers time and mileage by staying in the community. This is just a, a site plan, um, this is the home that's being built in the blue. The yellow is the salon that has a walkway and parking, and, um, I did actually go out and measure it myself. It's at least two hundred feet from Lake Pomona back, and it's very wooded. Like, when you pull up to, to the gate, you can't even see the home or the salon. So there's a lot of wooded area between the road and the, the home. Um, and this is just a floor plan, and you'll, you'll see the house on the next two slides, but this is just the floor plan of how the salon would look. Um, and this is the salon, this would be the area here, um, oh, excuse me. Anyway, it's just this tiny little area of her home, she has the porch coming up and a sidewalk, there'll be parking out on this side. And this is her home that's being built, and again, the salon would be right on the end here. And we can get to the, um, conditional use criteria. The use shall not adversely affect economic values or physical appearance of the neighborhood or areas surrounding the site or lot in question. No, the, there will be no exterior changes are proposed. Um, the use shall be consistent with the comp plan and with the proposed intent of the use district. Yes, the property is designated as residential, low-density and office-like commercial use as a secondary use. The establishment, maintenance or operation use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare, it would not. The use would not create an undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit schools, utilities or the provision of public safety, um, it would not, as additional traffic would be negligible. The design shall minimize adverse physical environmental effects on adjacent properties, including adverse visual impacts, buffer zones, which, um, necessary to shield any adverse factors shall be considered. The house is set back over two hundred feet from the road, and the property is very wooded. Additional space for parking, landscaping and adequate measures for ingress and egress shall be considered, um, if necessary to protect, protect adjacent structures or lots from any adverse impacted. It was, um, not necessarily. Um, the LCPC, um, staff on the August nineteenth meeting did approve the type B, um, home occupation for Ms. Steele for the hair salon.
This is in your district, sir? Yeah. Any petitioners, any, the petitioners here?
Yes, sir, Ms. Steele's here.
Can she come in, say hello to us and tell us what? Just a little, I mean, she gave it the whole spiel, you just give us your.
Yep, tiny little spiel. Good evening, Commissioners, um, I did, did indeed own, um, a salon in Mead, Colorado, and it was a very similar setup and situation to the Colonel's Island, Sunbury area, so it was a good, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty miles to the next local area, so it provided something, a service for people in our area to, um, ride their bikes or walk. So it also kept, um, you know, local revenue in, in our area. So it provided a great service to the people of, of the area that I lived in in Colorado, so I want to do the same thing for the residents of Colonel's Island.
Ms., Ms. Steele, uh, I heard you say you go only have one chair?
Yes, one chair, one person at a time.
Okay, so that could keep you busy all day long with just one.
One in and out, yeah. And there's plenty of room for, for cars to easily enter one side of my property and then exit the other. I actually have two entrances that makes it a loop, so there wouldn't be traffic jams at any point in time.
So you won't be coming out of Deloach Road, you'll be coming out of
Right.
Lake Pomona, which is.
Yep.
Which in your property is located right across from the bird pond, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that's right, yeah.
Well familiar with it.
Yep.
Was there anyone who, um, spoke?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I did have, um, Ms. Nancy Holman that lived down the road off of Deloach Road, she just wanted to know what it was about. It's like an informational, she wasn't opposed at all.
All right, let's move along then.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this, uh, conditional use at nine seventy-two Lake Pomona.
Second.
Second, we accept the issue, I got to ask you this, what brings you to Liberty County? I got to ask you that question.
Beautiful state of Georgia.
Good to have you here, all right, all in favor? Thank you.
Boy, if you got to ask somebody why they came to Liberty County.
That's from Colorado to Liberty County. That's because folks say people are leaving here.
I understand.
All right, very quickly, Mr. County Attorney.
Yep, very quickly, good evening, everybody. Uh, I believe most, you remember earlier this year, the Board of Elections, uh, proposed the idea of staggered terms for its membership. Uh, as with most government ladies, they thought it was a good idea to better ensure, uh, continuity of leadership and institutional memory. And so before you deny it, it's a resolution authorizing that local legislation be introduced to the, in the Georgia Legislature to implement the staggered terms for the Board of Elections. Um, and the way that'll be accomplished is having three of the five members which you appoint be appointed to two-year terms, uh, the next time appointments are before you, and I believe that's December of twenty twenty-six, is when all seven terms expire. If you folks remember, the Board of Elections is comprised of seven members, five appointed by this board and two appointed by each of the largest political parties in the, in the county. So, uh, the legislation will be introduced at the, uh, I guess the next legislative session. We'll have to coordinate with, uh, our local delegation. Uh, and then hopefully by the time you appoint, uh, definitely by the time you appoint in twenty twenty-six, uh, the staggered terms will be implemented. And if you have any questions, I'll be having to answer, and the election supervisor as well as the chairman are present this evening as well.
Would the chairman want to approach the bench?
Man, we almost made it here before eight.
Mm-hmm. Your name for the record, please, sir?
Commissioners. Any questions?
Just, just kind of, um, uh, I guess remind the board of how we got to this presentation, so if you just give us your.
Yes, sir, Chairman. Uh, I think it's the second time around that I have came before the board, uh, making this recommendation. It was about a couple of years ago, and, uh, we didn't get anywhere with it because of the timeline. So we, uh, met with the commissioner during your planning sessions, I think it was back in April? March, and we had a good discussion on it, and I think we was able to make our point known, like Mr. Davis said, trying to make sure that we have continuity on the Board of Elections. And, uh, I must say, uh, they prefer to praise their own pawns, so I'm praising our pawn for the Board of Elections now, because you all know where we came from.
Right.
I'm telling you.
You were here.
We, we, we are a very good functional board, and I think that going this direction, the continuity, staggering term, you put yourself in a better position, the county board commissioner puts yourself in a better position when you can have that, and making sure you have someone on that boat. when you can have that and making sure you have someone on that board who knows what to do. We got a good supervisor. We're gonna allow you a keeper.
Forever.
But the great responsibility is having a great supervisor. But the state look at their board members. We are the board's election superintendent.
Right.
And that's who they put the responsibility on, Commissioners. Anything go wrong, they coming after us. So it's for you all, I think this make it real possible that you will have that continuity, someone who knows about the election process and knows about these laws and making sure that our supervisors are doing what's right and supporting her 100%.
So this evening you speak on behalf of the entire Board of Elections for this recommendation?
This came from a recommendation from our Board of Elections.
That's what we need to hear, sir. Stand right there if you will. Chair entertain a motion.
Some movement, sir.
Any further discussion, questions? Seems to be in, all in favor, show your hands. We support your recommendation, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mosley, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, before I come, Mr. Wells is here.
I was gonna work him into your...
Yeah.
Let's do...
You ready?
We ready. Go ahead, Commissioner Stevens.
To this board and those who are out there listening, from District One, I want to say to Mr. Clinton Wells, thank you for the job that you and your small team have done in the last couple of weeks with all of the flooding that we've had on the east side. I can't speak for the other side of the county. But he has made things work that was almost impossible. I will say this, that traveling up and down the road with him, we've noticed that sometime the contributing factors is from people putting debris in the ditch, trying to burn it. It won't burn. Then when the rain comes, it gets into the pipe, clogs it up, makes it difficult for the water to flow. So I don't know how we can go about stressing that to people. But also I've said that, and some people did not like my statement, but I will say it. If you got water in the ditch and it won't move, it's the county responsibility. You got water on your property and it's not reaching the county ditch, it's your property. It's your problem. It sounds rude, but it's true. Because number one, we can't go on private property and cut a ditch to let the water come out. So we've got some other project down there. And I think Mr. Wells is waiting on one special piece of equipment to come in. And also whatever this board and this administration can do to expedite the purchase of a new motor for the grater with the side arms on it, or we'll be looking at purchasing a brand-new motor grater. So whatever we can do, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
A thanks to Commissioner, and you know, it ain't me. I don't do nothing by myself. It's all of us together. And we've had some issues. There's a couple of problems we found and we addressing. I mean, Eve Park was one of them. We went down there and, you know, it just needed bigger pipe. Basically, it's just too much water coming for that little pipe that was there. We put in there. We're not finished with that project. I've had to order some more materials to try to turn that pipe. I didn't like the way it looked when we got to the end. So we got to do a little better on that. We're gonna do that. And Trent's working with, on another outfall right up the road on King's Road, trying to get some easements and a drainage plan in place because that's not a county ditch. That's causing the problem now. He's got to get easement signed and get all that took care of. You know, Yeoman's Road, we've had some issues. We finally got that curb and got it cleaned out and just, it was clogged up.
Clogged up.
We got it cleaned out. Several little things, but all in all, it's just working. It's, we're making it work. You know, and y'all was gracious enough to let us hire more employees and buy excavator and dump truck to try to start a, just a ditch crew to clean ditches on pay rates. Get it all y'all took care of. I mean, as it stands right now, we just, we don't have the people to do it. We're trying to get them hired and hired qualified people is another issue. I'd like to tell you, I got a jam up one hired, but I got one hired we want to try to train and work with. I mean, that's it. You know, addressed a couple of things. I know I heard 196 and 17. Mr. Steele promised me he would have me apprised to redo that intersection by the end of the week. So, yeah, I agree, it's to the point where we need to fix it or cut our loss.
Needs some help, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm waiting on that. And the convenience center at Isle of Wight, I can't speak for Trent, but I know he was working trying to swap some land.
He was.
With someone in the area that had a piece that we could make it larger because it's just too small. Bad area, too small, not enough there. We're working on it.
We've had, as you all have been aware, maybe you're not, unprecedented amount of rainfall in the last month, especially in, more so in coastal Liberty County than even in this area.
I've heard up to 30 inches in three weeks at the coast.
And as we did our ride around the other day, you know, some of the, as Clinton has mentioned, some of it is us being able to, well, there's some things you would not have known if you did not have this kind of rainfall. It kind of made some problems come, you know, to the front. You wouldn't have known. And then we saw some people who have really, their homes built in these low-lying areas.
And that's another.
They built the home in these low-lying areas and the water has nowhere to go. One particular house, we had to ride through a swamp to get to the house.
Yeah.
So when the swamps fill up, there's nowhere to water to go. So some of the, is people, and I kind of want to strangle some of these real estate people, but I guess I can't because actually it's the landowner who makes that decision.
And there's more places where there's problems. I mean, just like Stevens Road. You can go in and dig all the ditches you want and the pipes, but there's nowhere for the water to go. It runs to the low spot and I see it. And I know Trent is working on that, trying to get easement out to the road so we can get the water out of there. But, and those roads...
Mr. Chairman, there's one thing else I just want to say while he's standing there since he mentioned about... And Mr. Mosley, think about it. Is there anything when someone goes and apply for a permit, is there any way that they can be advised of the elevation of the land that they are about to build on? To let them know, you need to build it up, you know? Or just give them the permit and then they go building in the low-lying area?
I just whispered over Lamisha today, is something that they can be done about that.
Well, we need to check on it.
We need that. We see so much of that.
Yeah.
And we live in coastal Georgia.
And you know, you hear everybody say, I mean, it's been here 30 years and it's never happened. Well, every time you clear a piece of wood and build a house and a driveway, and I mean, that's just immediate runoff.
Yeah.
You know?
So I'm gonna, thank you, Clinton. So I'm gonna, I want to, I could have sent a message to Commissioner Stevens. Thank you and your crew for doing what you're doing. I mean, doing a Herculean job.
I will let them know. I mean, we do the best we can. There's always going to be problems.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, there's going to be problems.
And I'm advising the general public to contact this officer, your commissioner. You know, you don't have to threaten us with, you know, you're gonna call Washington and all those kind of things.
Demand.
If you just call your commissioner. Now, we may not have an easy fix, it's like you said, because sometimes it may even take some supplier some time to get to you. Because you're not the only one that's having, you know, those kind of issues. So, but come to us respectfully and I promise you we'll respond to you.
Yeah, I try to help anybody I can.
Yeah.
Some of them don't like the outcome, but...
That comes with the territory.
You share problems just like Mr. Stevens.
Yeah. But this kind of rain has just been unprecedented, you know?
A lot of the problems in some of the areas is flat. And time you get the beavers in there.
Yeah.
And damming everything up. I mean, that's just, that's just it.
Yeah. One resident told us today, Mr. Mosley heard it, she's, her thing was, she lives on the coast too, but the tide's in, you know? So she mentioned she...
And it depends on the tide, whether the water run out or not.
Yeah, that's what she said today. We can't control those kind of things. Can't control those kind of things. No, can we control how much rain we have? But I do want to have a, you know, get your crew up to speed so we have a regular maintenance schedule and we maintain that maintenance schedule as much as we can. No doubt about that. That's just a requirement that we have.
Hope to get this crew going.
Yes, sir.
You know, get everything knocked out.
Yeah, and I guess you've, I guess you've kind of had the, what's it called, deploy to the coast during this season.
Yeah, like I said, the coast has got, I live on the west end of the county. Through all that, I probably didn't have five or six inches of rain.
Yeah.
I mean, it just wasn't a problem.
Yeah.
But the coast just kept getting hammered every day.
Yeah, yeah.
And phlegmy and area in there.
But I just want them to know that we know and we're doing our best to alleviate as many problems as we can.
Well, yeah, we're working on it, but some of it's just not an easy fix. So it's just not as easy as... Pulling the ditch or whatever.
Not because we don't care, we're not working. We're working, and once again, let your crew know, we appreciate.
I will. I'll let them know.
Thank you so much for your updates.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you got one more for Mr. Mosley, come if you don't mind, our Recreation Director. We're having some issues with parks. Serious issues with parks already. One of them that we are building, they're already tearing it up. So I don't know how we're gonna, why build these things if they're gonna go up there and tear it up? I'll go back to what we asked for years ago, some cameras. I know the cameras may not get everything, but it might get lucky and get a tag on them or get the face of someone. And if we catch them, we need to prosecute them.
We do.
Other than that, this board is sitting up here just wasting money, spinning it, going out by letting them go down there and tear up a darn thing.
The latest issues is having at Susie King Taylor Park. We've got people that are going down there, parks closed, they pull the wire fence off the pole that it's on. They break the eye and then they go in and do whatever they want to. We've got trail cameras out there now. We can get images, but one of the persons that, people that did damage out there, removed their tag from the car. So you couldn't truly see the tag on the back of the car. And then this past weekend, we had people right next to where we just put the septic in and building the pavilion, they went up there and destroyed all the grass in the area at the park doing donuts again. We've got grainy images of four young men and a vehicle. But he got stuck in the area where they had to put the line in from the pavilion to the septic tank. He got stuck in there and somebody had to pull him out. Went to the neighbors, they said they didn't see anybody out there. So it was in, it was in the evening. It was probably eight or nine o'clock at night when they were over there doing the damage. But we've had that as an ongoing issue down at Susie King Taylor Park.
We may have to speak to the sheriff about, I'm not sure what he could do. Providing a deputy ride through their, whatever schedule.
The parks closed signs, the wire chain across the entrance doesn't matter. They pull it out and go in anyway.
And nobody sees that.
Have you seen any pattern, whether it's the weekends or what they go?
It's random. Most time, like this weekend, I just went down there today after the holiday and saw the new damage down there to the grass area at the park.
I think that's it.
That's sad. We'll talk some more. You happy with the cameras we're using? Those that we installed or the developers installed?
The developer, the contractor.
Yeah. So we're confident that the camera could potentially catch? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, quickly, our Walterville amount has been, latest I saw was $23,000. So it's down to $23,000 that we've collected on...
That's the balance now?
Yes, sir. So that's where we are.
Tipping fees.
No, that's on the, what do you call it, the contract, the intergovernmental agreement.
Intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah.
So that's 23, 23,000.
23,000? For the $200 a month thing?
No, that's got to be solid waste.
It's for the solid waste.
That's got to be solid waste.
That's what I said, tipping fees, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
So we're at 23,000?
I'm sorry.
And you said the intergovernmental, yeah, at $200 and the 23,000.
That would be some years back.
Yeah, they ain't never paid.
So we down to 23,000. We're waiting on the pickleball course to be finished, but right now we have a tentative date of Friday, September 19th at 1:00 PM. And Maria will help me get that out to you guys. And then on next Wednesday at 4:00, we have our work session here in the Commission Chambers.
Next one?
Next Wednesday at 4:00. September 19th.
She sent the, you'd sent the calendar invite already?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right.
And that's all I have, sir.
Yes, all right.
Oh, no, I don't, sir. I introduced the newest member of our team, Ms. Lamisha Hunter. Ms. Hunter, will you please stand? She's our new Assistant County Administrator.
She can't just stand, she got to come and say, hey.
Yeah, she got to come and speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, my name is Lamisha Hunter and I am glad to join you as your new Assistant County Administrator. Did you want a brief bio?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I come to you with plenty of years of local government, that is my background. I started off in Statesboro. I was down here in Hinesville briefly, 2004 to 2006. I worked with Kenny Howard. I was his first grants writer, like to say his best grants writer. And so then I did go back home to Effingham County when my grandmother got sick. And I worked with Effingham County. I spent 14 years with the city of Rankin as the Planning Director, City Planner, interim City Manager, jack of all trades. I said I did everything but dig ditches. And so then I transitioned and went to Effingham Hospital for right at five years. And I was Special Projects Manager and Government Relations. And I managed the expansion projects and the registered lobbyists. So I'm excited to come down and work with you on your projects that you have going on and your expansion. And I just look forward to all that we can do together. Any questions?
And you said you're a grant writer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's what we need.
If you give us a grant for some cameras.
Whatever, we might be able to catch the X.
Good cameras.
Ms. Hunter, where are you from?
I'm from Guyan in Effingham.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm the Effingham Hunters.
Effingham Hunters, okay, all right.
Thank you, good to have you.
I look forward to working with you.
Welcome.
So I figured, order the chair and turn the motion to go in the executive session. Second, all in favor? Thank you so much. We will now enter the executive session. Mr. Donahue, how are you today?
Mr. Donahue, how are you today?